Good evening. It is Monday, April 22nd. It is 7:28 PM and I call the City Council meeting to order. Please stand and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm looking for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make that motion with the suggestion that we move the visitors to be heard up to after the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second that.
Motion by Councilmember Cahill, second by Councilmember DeLuca, and we'll move visitors to be heard to item six.
One other thing, Mayor, if I may. I actually have, if you look on the dais, I try not to surprise City Council too often, but I'm gonna throw you guys a curveball. I have a special event permit printed out and a liquor license application, and this is directly tied to the Orno Rotary Club for the Party in the Park, which is on June 1st in the Veterans Memorial Park right next door. If it would be all right with council, I would like to add this under new business. We could add it before A, so it'd be like A1 or A'. I don't know, something like that. Before we get into the conditional use permit and site plan review there. So if that's all right with council, I would like to add that on the agenda.
So look, we already have the motion to adopt the agenda and the second with the two changes, moving visitors to be heard and the addition of the special permit and liquor license for Party in the Park. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. First item in business tonight is our consent agenda, which includes April accounts payable and the City Council business meeting minutes from March 25th. Looking for a motion to approve that.
Subtle.
Moved by Councilmember Cahill.
Second.
Second by Councilmember DeLong. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Next item in business is visitors to be heard. Any visitors to be heard this evening? Seeing none, we will continue on. Next is Abdo and Ike and Meyer's audit report. Thanks for your patience in coming out tonight.
Thank you. Tonight, I'll go through the audit presentation of the 2018 financial statement audit. Now, the financial statements still are in draft form. I don't anticipate any changes other than when we receive the fire league pension actuary. We'll make adjustments for those note disclosures and amounts in the financial statement. But I don't anticipate any changes in any of other numbers. So starting out, the audit results, in the end, you hire us to give you an opinion on your financial statements. We intend on issuing an unmodified opinion or clean opinion, so the best opinion you can get. As part of the audit, too, we test seven different areas of Minnesota legal compliance and issue a report on that. Again, a clean report there in the Minnesota legal compliance findings. As part of the audit, we do gain an understanding of the city's internal control. We're not issuing an opinion on the effectiveness of the control. But there are two internal control findings that we've reported for a number of years, mainly due to the small size of the city staff, very common in medium to small-size organizations. It is important from a council perspective though to be aware of those, the two conditions, and pay attention to financial information throughout the year. The first one is a preparation of financial statements. Since we're doing the audit and preparing the financial statements, we do show that as an internal control finding. Now, the city staff does review the financial statements before we issue the final, and you guys are looking at those tonight, too, so there is some monitoring controls in place. And the second one, the limited segregation duties with the small accounting staff, it's pretty tough to fully segregate the accounting duties, so it's important to be aware of that condition, too. Now, moving into the financial information, I'll cover all the different funds of the city, starting with the general fund, looking at your special revenue funds, capital project funds, your enterprise funds, and then, once we get done looking at each individual fund of the city, we'll look at some ratio comparisons, given the four-year history of certain ratios in comparison to other cities throughout the state of similar population, and then also other cities in Hennepin County. So the first graph here is looking at your ending general fund balance, which is the blue line there with the diamond. We compare that to your next year's budget as a percentage. It's important to maintain the general fund at a sufficient amount to a cash flow purpose with your main revenue sources, your property taxes, and local government aid coming in about halfway through the year. Internally, you've set a policy where you want that right around that 60% of minimum fund balance policy. You can see very close over the five years presented. In 2018, you're at 63%, which was a little bit of a decrease in percentage and dollar amount from 2017, where you're at 68%. The previous three years were right around that 60%. If we look at the activity in the general fund to get to that ending fund balance, here we give you a budget to actual. Total revenues just over 1.6 million, real close to budget. This is small variance of about 2,600. Expenditures at 1.49 million, which were over budget by about 74,000. The general government, public works, and cultural and recreation departments were all over budget. So revenues came in higher than budget, about 168,000. We transferred out 204,000 to other city funds for a total decrease of about 37,000 with the total ending fund balance in the general fund at about 1.1 million. Now, the next couple of slides, we'll look at that three-year history of your revenues in your general fund by type and also your expenditures. So the first one here is looking at the revenues. You'll see, like I mentioned, when we're looking at the fund balance, your main revenue sources, your property taxes, that first group there, 2016 is the blue, 2017 the gray, and 2018 is the green. So you can see that fairly consistent with a little bit of a decrease over the three years presented. The next highest area is your intergovernmental, which the majority of that is your local government aid, fairly consistent over the three years presented, too. Expenditures by type. Here, your largest area is the spending on your general government, public safety, and public works, with general government and public safety remaining fairly consistent over the three years presented. Public works had a little bit of a jump in expenditures in 2018, with 2016 and 2017 being fairly consistent. And then your transfers out to your other funds, meaning your capital funds, consistent from 2017 to 2018. Now, getting into your capital project funds, you do have four capital project funds. So here, we give you a three-year history of the ending fund balance by category. You can see there's three categories there, restricted, assigned, and unassigned. The restricted is anything that's restricted outside of the city by third parties. So this restricted amount here is unspent bond proceeds from your bonds that were issued in 2018. The assigned is assigned amounts that you basically designated for specific purposes. This trend here, you can see, has increased each of the last three years, made up of your capital project fund, your street improvement fund, and then your equipment capital fund. The bulk of that's in your capital improvement fund, which had about 1.5 million of ending fund balance. You will see the unassigned is a deficit amount. There's about 178,000 deficit fund balance in your downtown development fund. We do have two special revenue funds that are reported, the fire partnership fund and the EDA fund. Here you can see both of these funds are committed for specific purposes, so as a council, you formally committed them. The fire partnership makes up the bulk of it, and that's the biggest reason for the decrease from 2017 to 2018. There's about 188,000 of capital expenditures in 2018. So at the end of 2018, total fund balance was about 642,000. The fire made up about 524,000 of it, and then in your EDA fund, you have about 119,000 under 2018. These are your governmental debt service funds, so the bonds outstanding in your governmental activities. It doesn't include your water and sewers, so we'll look at those funds separately. There's also bonds outstanding in those funds. So you can see there's five different issues here, 2012A through 2018A, with a total of about 4.3 million of bonds remaining at the end of the year. Within those debt service funds, you have just over 1 million of total assets, which about 420,000 of that is made up of cash. These bonds are being paid back with a combination of property taxes and special assessments collections. So that graph there just gives you a ten-year comparison of your future principal and interest payments, the blue being the principal, the green being the interest. So it gives you an idea of future debt service payments and also when certain bonds drop off. So you can see in 2027, your debt service decreases some bond proceeds. Now, for the enterprise funds, for each of these funds, we give you two different graphs here. The top one's a cash flow from operations graph, which also includes debt service, principal, and interest, and the bottom graph is your ending cash balance graph, covering, both of them covering four years. So starting with the water fund, looking at the top there, the dark blue is your operating receipts of your sales from water services. You can see that has increased from 2017 to 2018, so you have a little bit of an increase there. Another thing you notice that the receipts coming in is not fully covering the debt service plus operations, so the debt service is the green, the operations is the gray. You are covering from operations, so you're generating cash flow from operations. The water fund does also have other sources to help cover the debt service, there's special assessments, and then also there's some property taxes in there this year. So looking at the cash balance, it did decrease in total a little bit, I mean, at just over 1.1 million compared to just under 1.2 million. We do give you a minimum target, which is made up of the following year's debt service plus 50% of the operating costs. So you can see the unrestricted, the blue portion of cash is right at that minimum. You do have a portion designated for capital, which is a green, and then the gray portion is restricted under the bonds that were issued, so that's unspent bond proceeds. Now, with the sewer fund, similar graph here, you can see the cash flow from operations up top. Here, it shows you did generate cash, and the biggest reason there is the payments to Met Council during the year weren't all made in 2018, so when we're looking at a cash flow, those aren't factored in. So, you know, moving down to that bottom, you have about 186,000 of cash at the end of the year. There were payables of about 197 that you owed Met Council for sewer services during the year. So you can see if all those payments would have been made, that cash balance really would have been at a deficit and would have been borrowing from other funds. There is a portion here that's restricted to under the bond covenants, the gray piece. So with this fund, we do definitely recommend that you look at the rates and the future cash flow of the sewer fund. Stormwater fund, here you can see it up top, most of the years, it's been generating cash flows from operations and also covering the debt service payment, so this is a lot of the cash balance to increase some over the four years presented. And then add about 529,000 with the portion, add again the gray portion that's restricted under the bond. So we kind of covered all the funds. Here's what it looks like, the city as a whole broken up. So your total cash balance over a three-year period, broken up by those specific funds. You can see in total, it has been increasing. That would change some if those payments to Met Council would have been made, about that 190-some thousand. A couple items to point out, the bottom dark blue is your general fund, like we saw in the fund balance. That cash balance is remaining fairly consistent. Over the three years, the red part is your capital funds. That's been growing, like we saw when we were looking at the individual capital funds. And then your enterprise funds, the light blue, that would have significantly decreased, like I mentioned, if all those payments from Met Council would have been made. I'll get in into some of the ratios, like I mentioned, given the comparison to two different peer groups. So the city of Maple Plain is the blue. All cities of the fourth class in Minnesota make up the green, and then the gray is all cities in Hennepin County. So here, looking at the top, your tax rate, you can see that's higher than the peer groups presented, but has been decreasing over the four years presented. The taxes per capita, the one at the bottom there, has been fairly consistent over the four years presented. Here are a couple of debt ratios, the top one there, the debt per capita. You can see there's an increase in 2016 and an increase in 2018, the two most recent years where you have issued bonds. So that number will fluctuate depending on any new future bond payments or bond issuances. If you don't issue bonds, that number will continue to drop as you pay down on the principal of the outstanding bonds. Here's a couple graphs, looking at your governmental fund current expenditures and capital expenditures. The top one, the current expenditures, there you'll see fairly consistent over the four years presented with a slight increase in trend. The capital expenditures at the bottom kind of correlate with those two bond issuances. You know, you can see in 2018, you issued bonds, you had a bigger project, so that makes sense that that per capita number increased. So that number will fluctuate depending on what type of projects and purchases you have each year. The two graphs here, looking at your 2018 expenditures by program and your revenue by source in comparison to the peer groups 2017. Probably the item I'd point out here is that you can, I think the comparison you can draw is that the spending or revenue sources now follow similar trends to the peer groups that were presented. For example, the, you know, the general government expenditures are lower than public safety in the peer groups in years falls on the same trend, so you do rely on going, so the percentage of expenditures are fairly consistent with other cities by function. And then the last two, I think we kind of covered these in the cash flow from operations when we're looking at the water fund and the debt service fund. Here, this gives you a debt service coverage, looking at the cash flow generated from operations compared to your principal and interest payments on your bonds outstanding. So anything over 100% would indicate that you're generating sufficient cash to cover those debt payments. Anything on there would indicate that there's other resources that will need to be used to make the debt payments. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
I have two, and I don't know whether it's you or Bobby to answer this, but why wasn't the Met Council payment made in 2018?
Yeah, so there was a rationale of hanging on to those payments. I wanted a better explanation why there was an increase made. The explanation I got, not thrilled with, but I think that's what I'm getting, and that's why those payments weren't made, they were held. But now they need to be paid, obviously, so that'll take place. But that's why they were held, was...
And then there was a, there was a couple slides up there that you, you had Class IV cities as a comparison. What are those Class IV cities that were, that you're comparing us against?
So those are all cities throughout the state of Minnesota, and I believe those are population 10,000 and lower.
Just based purely on population?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I vote, I think it's for Bobby more.
Yep.
Do you know if there was any specific reason for the public works increase or was it just across-the-board cost increase?
I think there was a little bit of across-the-board cost increases that we experienced there. Another note, too, is that, you know, annually, we don't budget any overtime for these guys at all at the beginning of the year. And so if there's different events, I think last year we had like six water main breaks. We had a lot of different weird stuff that happened this last year that could have drove up some costs in that area as well. But we also had some engineering, I think there's some public works engineering stuff that were higher there, too.
So what would be classed under other services? Because that was half of the over-budget increase.
Sure, I'd have to look at that, you know, off the top of my head.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would be interesting to know, because that was 38,000 of the 66 over.
Sure, sure, yeah. What is that, yep.
So those, those three categories, I assume you may be looking at page 94 of the financial statements. So the first one, the personal services, is all wages and benefits. The next one, supplies, is fairly obvious. Then anything else would fall under the other services and charges. Bobby, I can give you a breakdown of all your individual internal accounts that make up that.
And I can, I can get that, too. I can still run reports on 2018 accounts and pull up the expenditures that were in there.
That would be helpful, thank you.
Sure.
So Bobby, yeah, if you wanna, you can, if you need the groupings of these, I'll send them. But I think you should have them in your trial balances you sent over there.
Yep.
Good questions, any other questions? Anything else? Thank you, thank you for your work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Next item in business is our administrative reports, and tonight, I'm looking to approve letters A through F as written and received, unless anyone has any specific questions. Okay. Looking for a motion then to approve A through F.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember DeLuca.
Second.
Second by Councilmember DeLong. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. And then we'll have our quarterly finance update from our administrator.
If we weren't tired of talking about finances by now, I'm gonna have to bore you with some additional finances. Let's get this pulled up here. Oh my goodness, installing update, oh my. I literally just had this pulled up on the screen. How about this? Ah, I'll smart the bypass. So I'll just kind of briefly go through this, it's in the packet as well, but looking at the 2019 year-to-date expenditure report and then look at revenues as well. So the main budget item, and just so that council knows, when I make up these numbers, these numbers up that you see, like the general fund budget, it's removing like transfers and some bond payments and different things in there to try and give you the most accurate representation of what we spend. And you can see it's a little high currently, right now, at 32.5%. And the reason behind that is a few things. One, we've had some engineering expenses for, and planning services for designing Veterans Memorial Park. Those are actually out of our par capital improvement fund, but for the time being, right now, they're just coded in planning and engineering services, even though we have dollars set aside for that. The other main reason why we're a little bit high is we're ahead on our police payments. We've paid 36% of their yearly budget through our portion already at this time, so that drives up our percentage of why we're a little bit over there as well. Workers' compensation was already paid at the beginning of this year, and that's a larger percentage that we do. Otherwise, we've got some street reconstruction engineering services that, again, need to be taken out of bond proceeds at the end of the year. Outside of that, though, we're really close at 25%, if not a little bit under, with those, you know, those explanations right there. So nothing too alarming that I see. Otherwise, you can look across-the-board, community events. We haven't spent any money yet, but I imagine we will with movie licenses and different equipment that, coming up, so I would imagine out of that just shy of $4,000 budget right there, that we will eat that, eat those costs up in the next couple of months. The water sewer and stormwater fund are all under budget at this time for expenditures. But I expect, a lot of the expenditures that we would spend on these, we tend to do that when it's a little bit warmer out. We're not working on any maintenance of these type of deals, obviously, when there's snow on the ground and road weight restrictions, so that's a little bit of why they're on that 16%. The fire department is doing a really solid job right now. They've spent 22.4% of their budget, and some of the larger items that they've spent so far is, they spent some money on a turnout gear dryer, but actually, it was a grant, so it's gonna come back in revenues, too. So the fire department's being fiscally very, they're doing their job right now, so. Is there any questions on the expenditure portion of this before I move on to revenues? Alrighty, let's get down to revenues. So revenues, this is the big shocker at the beginning of the year that is really scary, but I promise you, is not the reality. Yes, the general fund has received 3.8% of revenues, and that can be very alarming considering it is, we're towards the end of April. The rationale behind that is kind of like what Andy said. The majority of our revenues come through taxes and LGA, and we've not received any of our taxes yet. That won't happen until May, mid to end May, and then LGA, I believe our first payment comes in June, which is at the very end of the state fiscal year, and then we get another one in December. So, and that's set up by the state for a deferred payment on LGA, so they split it between two of their fiscal years. So 3.8% of revenues, not, not concerned at all right now with that. That's in line with what it was last year around this time, and we still did a good job coming in over revenues, as Andy explained. So that's not too alarming to me at all. Our water fund, our sewer fund, and our stormwater fund are close to where they should be. I would say the main point with these three funds is that, one, we haven't received all for this, first quarter of this year yet, all of the payments for that either. But also, we do collect special assessments, and we have not collected any special assessments for any of these accounts, nor have we, we do get a little bit of taxes that come in our way as well on, with these three enterprise fund accounts that Andy had also mentioned, and none of that has been received yet. So looking at them, just slightly below 25%, now the stormwater is around 20%. Not alarmed at that, at this point at all. And lastly, the fire department, they've received just under 30% of their revenues, and they've not received any of their 2% money from the state yet. That's a really good sign. Right now, Independence has paid 33.33% of their share of the budget, and Maple Plain, we're right on track at 25% right now. Nothing is alarming from the fire department. I expect them to be in good fiscal shape right now with revenues as well. Any questions on revenues? Well, good, I'm glad, and then we're all on the same page. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions at all pertaining to the current health status of the city budget for 2019 first quarter.
Any questions for Bobby? Hearing none, then I'm looking for a motion to approve the quarterly finance report.
Subtle.
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by DeLuca. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post same sign. All right, next we'll move on to new business. First item is the special event permit and the liquor license application from the Orno Rotary.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I know, like I said, I kind of threw a curveball at you guys, but these are two permit, let's do them one at a time. The special event permit is required by, to be approved by City Council for any large events taking place in the, in the park, in a public gathering area. And so that's what we have here. I will say that both of these applications, I'm asking that if we do go forward in approving them, that we do that pending background check by Wes Hennepin. It's a formality, but I, I think it's still important that we stay with that. Even though I'm fairly confident that the Orno Rotary Club's in, in good standing, I still think just, just that is a good practice to continue going by. So the Orno Rotary has officially submitted a event permit and a liquor license application for the June 1st Party in the Park event. This event happened last year. They did submit for a special event permit and a liquor license last year and went before City Council. That was approved by City Council. Wes Hennepin did do the background checks. Everything passed last year as well, and the event was very successful. It raised just... event was very successful, it raised just close to $10,000, and those proceeds are actually going to benefit the city in veterans' park improvements. So all in all, this is a, a really great event. I know that the, the event takes, takes pride in making sure that things are done correctly, the liquor license, the volunteers helping to distribute liquor, go through proper training through West Hennepin, they make sure that anyone that is distributing alcohol has gone through the training to make sure that they're not serving to any minors or not violating any liquor laws. So with that, from a staff standpoint, I, I would recommend approving both of these, the special event permit and the liquor license for the Orno Rotary Club for the June 1st Party in the Park event.
Any questions?
Has anything changed on the permit, what they're asking over last year?
No.
Same exact boxes checked here?
That's correct.
Thanks.
And you want them approved individually or together?
I, I, I think, I think you can just make one notion, one motion that approves both of them together.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion to approve the special event permit and the liquor license application pending all background checks, come back clear for the Party in the Park event for the Orno Rotary on June 1st.
So moved.
Moved by councilmember DeLonge.
Second.
Second by councilmember DeLuca, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Next new item of business is Resolution 19-0422-01, conditional use permit and site plan review at McDermid Enthrone 5630 Pioneer Creek Drive, heavy manufacturing.
Yes. Honorable Mayor, Council, I'm bringing this item before you tonight after being recommended by the city's planning commission at their last regular meeting, and it's a request for site plan review to consider an approximately 2,000 square foot addition onto the existing building as well as a conditional use permit to allow heavy manufacturing or manufacturing within the proposed expansion area as well as within the existing building. The property itself's located at 5630 Pioneer Creek Drive, it's zoned industrial by the city, it's guided by the city's comprehensive plan as industrial. The site is 5.84 acres in overall size. The applicant approached the city approximately two months ago, asking what they would need to do to expand a portion of the building to add on a new polymer mixing room to the, what would be the west side of their building. And the city did a review of the existing building as well as the site, noted that all commercial development, uh, expansion of commercial development is required to go through site plan review, but at the same time, we were looking at the site plan review, we discussed further what they would be doing within both the expansion and then also what they do within the existing building. In our review of that, we found that the mixing or blending of chemicals is by definition considered heavy manufacturing, and historically, they do not have, the city does not have record of a conditional use permit pertaining to heavy manufacturing within the existing building. And then in order to do the polymer blending within the new proposed 2,000 square foot expansion, they would also need a conditional use permit for that, as we again classify that as heavy manufacturing. So they went through the application process with the city. The existing building itself is approximately 61,000 square feet. I noted that they're expanding the building by 2,000 square feet off of the west side of the building. You can see on the site plans that were provided in the packet, there's an expansion area that comes off the back portion of the building. In order to realize that expansion area, they'd also have to do some very minor site improvements or site modifications to simply maintain this access drive around the backside or the perimeter of the building by pushing out the western edge of that in one area to be able to accommodate the building expansion in that particular area. So they would make some modifications as are noted by the darker gray color on the plan, that would include, include a revision of the existing bituminous and curbing that is in that particular site. Neither one of those improvements would trigger any additional stormwater requirements by the city, they'd be below the threshold that would require that. So as it relates to the site plan itself, the existing building, we look at kind of all aspects of the existing building from the standpoint of required setbacks, we look at parking, and then we look at any other standards that the city has that would be applicable. Cause the expansion doesn't comprise 15% of the existing building or greater, the city doesn't go in and look at then updating or bringing the entire building and site into current compliance sta, or current standards or compliant with current standards. But we do look at general aspects of the site and go through how the existing building and then the proposed addition meets those. The proposed addition would have a setback of approximately 90, I'm sorry, 77 feet from the western property line at the closest point, and the required requisite rear yard setback is 20 feet, so it's, it's clearly more than compliant with applicable setbacks. All other aspects of the existing building meet all required setbacks that are associated with industrial use. The other factor that we looked at is the parking, the existing building itself has 73 parking spaces. For this particular use, the city has some, some general classification as automated product manufacturing. I don't know that they, that we have within our ordinance an exact mix or an exact prescription for this particular use. What we did is talk to the applicant about the number of employees that would be on the property and associated with any shift, maximum number of employees per shift, and currently there's about 20 employees on their max shift with the possibility that maybe they'd expand it up to 30, certainly well below the 73 spaces that are on the site. One thing to note is if there were a change in use on this particular property, and there was a utilization of the 61,000 square feet for manufacturing, manufacturing office, office, and even some warehousing, that parking count number could create a deficit on this particular site between the use of the building and the existing parking. But for the purpose of what they do and how they're utilizing the building, we feel that there's adequate parking, and you'll notice that if you do any kind of a drive-by on this site, any day of the week, at any time, there's more than adequate parking on this particular property. So with that, as it relates to the site plan, we believe they're meeting all requirements of the city pertaining to site plan review. Then as it relates to the conditional use, the city defines, within its industrial district, we define light manufacturing and heavy manufacturing, and heavy manufacturing includes the, it includes the mixing or processing of various chemicals or chemical blending, mixing and production, and that really does fit with what they do within a portion of the existing building, and then also what they would be doing within the new addition. And so the areas that are identified on this overall building site plan, and the addition isn't shown on here, but I did box in essentially that addition, but you can see the parameters of the existing building, there's two rooms that they have used to do the chemical blending. My understanding is actually one of the rooms is no longer being used for that.
No, it currently is, but the plan is to swap some bulk storage to make that backroom a better, tighter.
Okay. So within that, what we tried to identify on this plan was the allowable areas within the building that would be permitted for chemical blending or chemical processing and associated with the conditional use permit. So we, we took this proposal to the city's planning commission, they reviewed it at a public hearing, there were no comments made either before or after the public, before, during, or after the public hearing. Planning commissioners did recommend the approval of the overall site plan review and conditional use permit, but they wanted to ensure that the city was somewhat cautious in how they applied the heavy manufacturing, or how they allowed heavy manufacturing on this site, such that any reuse or intensification of use on this particular building would have to come back to the city for further review and/or an amendment to the conditional use permit. And so by, in order to do that, we specifically highlight which areas within the existing building and then also the addition can be used for the chemical blending or chemical processing, and we furthermore specify in some detail the chemical blending and processing as the only type of heavy manufacturing that can occur within this building. It's not to say that we wouldn't permit that at some other time, but because of the nature of that type of use and some of the potential impacts associated with heavy manufacturing, this, we, we felt this was the most prudent way for the city to, to approve what they're asking for as well as just define it so that they can continue to use the facility how they want to use it, but the city does have some safeguards in place should use change or intensification of the use change within the particular building. So with that, we put together a resolution which captures all of the comments that were made by the planning commission as well as staff, and with that, there was a recommendation by planning commission to recommend approval, both site plan approval and conditional use permit. The applicants are here, as you'll know, and also the general contractor that's gonna be doing the addition, so if there's questions for that. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff or the applicants regarding this conditional use permit? All right. With that then, I am looking for a motion to approve Resolution 19-0422-01.
So moved.
Moved by councilmember Cahill.
Second.
Second by councilmember DeLonge, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next item of business is bids for Bryantwood and Rainbow Park to remove the P rock and the wood chips.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. What you have before you is, we have three bids to look at replacing some P rock at Bryantwood and Rainbow Park. Now, there's a couple of reasons why this is brought up. One, there's an insurance issue that P rock has been an issue over the last few years with P rock and falls and just the safety quality of what P rock is, it's been recommended to remove that from our parks. That's not something new or unique to Maple Plain, that's all over the place. So actually, the park commission had been really pushing for this and directed to get some information, staff to provide some information, and as a result, staff provided at the last park commission meeting, three proposals to look at replacing, not only removing the P rock that is existing, but then replacing it with engineered wood fiber, which apparently is the best insurance replacement of, of P rock is to do this. And we received three quotes, they're all very comparable, I was pretty happy with them, they all have costs for removing the P rock, and then also installing these engineering, engineered wood fiber, wood chips essentially. And as a result, the, the low bid was, was done by Midwest Ground Cover out of Orno, so they're local, and the bid was $13,416.56, and the financial impact is that this would be taken out of the park budget, which we budget, I think it's close to $20,000 a year that we budget for, in here for park maintenance. This is something that we've been dragging on over the last few years, haven't done. So I, I think this was done very well, the quotes are, are well done in this regard, and I, staff would recommend moving forward with the low bid, Midwest Ground Cover, but I'd be happy to answer any questions from city council.
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead with the recommended bid.
I'll send it back.
Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yep, absolutely.
Who contacted Midwest Ground Cover for the bid?
Yeah, Public Works reaches out to some of the companies that they know that have done this work, and explain the magnitude of the work happening.
Okay, the only reason I question that Bobby is we've had discussions about focusing our public works people on the public work stuff that needs to be done, and securing bids appears to me to be more of an administrative function.
Sure.
And why are we having Matt and Harry out doing bids when there's work that needs to be done in the city?
I think it's a fair point, I think it's a very fair point, yeah.
Any further discussion regarding the bids? Okay, with that, there's been a motion and a second, so all in favor of approving the lowest bid?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Uh, next item of business is closed session, attorney-client economic development negotiation.
I move we go into closed session.
Moved by councilmember DeLuca, second by councilmember DeLonge, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.